Good evening, Dighton. Welcome to the Town of Dighton Planning Board meeting this Wednesday, February 5th, 2024. By way of reminder, oh, thank you, this is a meeting, public here, meeting being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast. Could you please join me for the pledge of allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. Thank you. All right, so I want to confirm the next meeting is going to be Wednesday, February 19th at 2025 at 7:00 PM. And on to the first order of business. You discuss an act, William Mendoza, Jr., 1971 Elm Street, map 17 lot 78, form a application.
Good evening, Rachel Smith from O.K. Engineering, representing William Mendoza. Some of you may be familiar with the Mendoza's greenhouses on Elm Street. This is a large property. It had about 15 acres. It has an existing house and some buildings on it. 1995 Elm Street, which you'll see shown there, is actually the original farmhouse, a very old farmhouse. And when that was divided off from the farm years ago, they put the boundary line very close to the back of the house. So what we would like to do right now is we are proposing a non-buildable parcel A of .231 acres, which will be conveyed to the owner of 1995 Elm Street and combined with that lot, just to give them some more backyard.
Okay. Yeah, that was gonna be my only question. I wasn't sure what the purpose was.
Yeah, because they have almost no backyard and where they park is actually not even on their property.
Okay.
So just trying to take care of that.
Understood.
And then because there is a small building, also, we wanted to get behind that so that there wasn't an issue with that one.
Got it. And that's why it turns in there?
Yep.
Okay. That looks pretty straightforward to me. Members of the board, are there any questions for the applicant? On what's being done here?
No.
Oh, you want a moment to look at it, or?
No.
Good? Okay.
I think you're worth far.
All right. Take my word for it. That's excellent. All right. No, no concerns here at all. This looks pretty straightforward and.
It's really simple.
Okay. Well, thank you. So there are no questions. Somebody want to make a motion to approve the application for the William Mendoza of 1971 Elm Street, map 17 lot 78?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Just made and seconded. Any discussion before we take a two vote? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Are there ayes or abstentions? That's four ayes.
Thank you.
Okay. And now we sign.
Just the top or all of them?
Um, all.
All three, right?
Mylar, three.
Mylar, plus. 2026? Yeah. Time flies. Maybe you want to see if they'll elect to do a tenure term for you. Okay. Check. It was. Yeah, Woody wasn't doing well. Took longer with the formalities than it did for the hearing, right?
That's the way you do it.
You'll look at though.
Oh, thanks.
You did.
All right. Thank you. All right. Good to go. Thank you. All right. Next order of business is the Bristol County Agricultural High School, 135 Center Street, map five, lot 79. This is a preliminary discussion of the parking plan. Somebody present? Yep. Please come to the microphone.
Thank you to the planning board. My name is Derek Costa. I serve as the superintendent of Bristol County Agricultural High School. Just to give a little bit of a preliminary review of the parking study, before we start there, I do want to thank the board for the work that you had done in collaboration with the school in preparation for the 52 parking space, small gravel lot that we put into place. It's given us the opportunity to relieve the pressure that we've had on the campus, even though we went through an enrollment growth and we did our study and did our review. We've noticed that many of our students now are coming into our co-op programs within the industry and internships, something that we couldn't have put together in the overall process of our enrollment growth. Very successful. That helps us get kids into the workforce and into the trades. So our co-op program and internship program has grown, leading to kids who are driving their cars onto campus. So that relief of that parking space there was helpful. So we appreciate the collaboration you did with us in the first stages of the project back in September and October. The second piece, we appreciate the town and the town select board, along with the DPW director, Tom Feria, who's been working with us on the study of the road itself of Center Street. We've got some apprehensions and concerns about the vehicular traffic in that space. We understand we contribute to a lot of that, given the fact that our student load has obviously gone up by 200 and our parking spaces have gone up. The entrance and the exits of those parking areas are challenging into our roadways. There, we have more. We have three times the amount of entrances that we had previously before. So we understand that we contribute to it, but we also recognize that the fact that that roadway has been quite of a challenge for a period of time during the bridge construction, prior to that, when it was a single lane. And being a resident of Berkeley, I completely understand that that's been a concern of ours for a period. So thank you for the work that you've done on helping us with that. Just as an update to the, to the planning board, myself and Director Miranda have been working with a company called Walker Consultants. They've been assisting us in the process in reviewing, a comprehensive review for our parking needs on the campus, on the campus at Bristol Aggie. Their, their approach has been kind of a three-pronged approach. They're looking at our student enrollment changes that we've had, some of which I've had that conversation with you. The other bit is the overall curriculum requirements. We're expanding in the sense that we've added a vet center to the facility itself, which many of you have visited during our fall show. And you've noticed that participation within the community and community engagement events have grown significantly too. That's our goal. We try to be able to serve as a hub here in the town of Dighton, from an educational perspective, to be able to take in individuals from all parts of Bristol County. So part of that is really reviewing that proposal review, and they evaluated the current conditions. They looked at the capacity. They looked at the traffic flow, and they looked at potential expansion options that we had in place. The proposal, which we will be sharing with our master plan committee first and with our board of trustees, and then we can come back again and have that follow-up discussion with the planning board if we pursue anything further in some of the results that we have. But its focus was on the traffic flow, really approaching the parking efficiency we have on campus. Yes, we have surface lots, but we want to make sure that we have enough and they're in the right place. We want to maintain the safety of our students and individuals that are coming onto the campus, along with faculty, and we want to comply with the zoning regulations that come into place, both in the town and also within the community. There were some key findings that have preliminarily come out. We understand that we're under a parking shortage. Begs the question, obviously, in the construction and renovation. I led to that in the discussion of our enrollment growth and also our student population driving on campus now because they're getting jobs. They can leave now. They can actually get out for co-op and in place. We've also looked at the ability to take a look at that deficiency, but we have students who are on a waiting list for parking. And that, kind of that pressure relief valve on the gravel lot helped a lot. We see that there'll be something in the future that we may potentially to be addressing. Part of the parking results also too is an update that, as part of the parking plan, was they studied the traffic flow and the challenges. We have high congestion areas at two critical peak times of the, of the course of the day. We have a morning congestion that starts about 7:30 in the morning till about 8:10. And then we have an afternoon congestion that starts about 1:40-ish or so, I'd say considerably around 2:15 when we release students for a very small pressure period. We've worked in concert with the police department, police chief, and the town to really start looking at what we could mitigate in that areas for safety. They took the feedback, meaning Walker Consultants, and were able to take a look at that and some of the delays and safety concerns into consideration to the report. And the last piece of it too is we got to look at the regulatory considerations. We have to look at the compliances of the zoning laws, the ADA space requirements, and really what the energy code is going to look like of the facility that we have. So we have some coding and CMRs that we have to be attentive to. Our next steps, as I said, is presenting it to the master plan committee. We have a master plan committee on campus, although we constructed our campus. Under our leadership, we're looking at the next five to 10 to 15 years out, looking at our facilities and utilization. So part of that is land use, and that land use conversation impacts parking, impacts other things that we would like to potentially utilize our facilities for. We'll present it as next steps to the master plan committee and then again to the board of trustees in the spring so they are aware of it. The governing body of the board of trustees will then provide recommendations to see if we can look at the cost of expansions for parking on campus, if there is any appetite in this climate to be able to do any of those expansions and costs that have been outlined. And then if there is, we'll then bring those recommendations and findings from the board of trustees back out to, if it comes into the implementation, to the town planning board. So that's the update.
All right. You mentioned in the email, I'm assuming this is the email that came from you, that you had a parking study that you can share with us? Is that something you got to email?
Yeah, so we, I will do that definitely, once we have an opportunity to put that publicly out to our master plan group and to our board of trustees. In fairness to them, they haven't had the opportunity to review that study. So I wanted to respect their board and governance as first.
Okay. All right. And you said that's going to be in the spring, or is that?
Yeah, that will be.
Okay, so in a couple months from now, we would expect you to circle back with this board?
Yeah. And again, part of that parking study presentation that comes into place, there may be pieces of that study that does never come into fruition. The board may say, we're not taking those steps in those directions. We don't have the capital expenses for that, to afford that. So sharing in full transparency, sharing a document completely out, that may never be something that we actually take on, is unfair to you all because you're chasing down a road that we may never go.
Are you planning at that point to submit a, a site plan for the work to be done, or are you? Preliminary, I don't know what the intention is.
The intention really was of the, of the consultant work was to provide us what we would need to fill some of the gaps that we have. So I don't think we're at the stage of a site plan at any point now. That would constitute us to have capital funding to create the size parking lots that were associated. And two, we'd have to study the location clearly, obviously geographically of where we needed to put service parking lots. There's some impact areas that have watershed concerns, and there's issues that are right within our farmland that we may not have as touchable land, that we agree. It may not be something a decision of the town would make. It's something that the organization as a school said, that's not something we want to change, the overall climate of the campus by changing a parking lot with a field or vice versa.
All right. Do you think April timeframe would be one we'd expect to hear from you?
Yeah, I would assume so. I think that'd be a good idea.
All right. Okay. Can probably put something tentatively on the agenda.
Yeah.
Very cool.
That's good. So I wanted to, I just wanted to open up for any questions. If there's anything besides the actual physical report that you're looking for, is there any specific questions that you have associated to the ideas around the parking study?
Well, I guess I'm, I'm curious where you think alternate locations might be for a parking area, aside from what you have now.
Yeah. Okay, that's good.
Yeah. I mean, I didn't know, did you consider any off-site parking? Like, if you're going to have a larger growth, with, 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 with the potential for shuttling people back and forth? And it's not convenient, but if you, if you start to grill outside the means of what you're able to put parking spots on your campus, is it, is that like a satellite parking?
No, it's a great question. Yeah. The, the only location that we have currently on our campus that we own or the county owns would be the wood farm, the property on 138. That, that's pretty much surface preparation ready. But again, from an agricultural perspective, we appreciate that because it produces the hay that we need for our animals. So.
Okay. Gentlemen, have any other questions for? All right. Really appreciate you coming out tonight and presenting to us. And please let us know when you're able to, we're going to tentatively put something on the, on the agenda for April.
Great. Yeah, pleasure. Nice meeting you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right. So next item on the agenda is Shaw's Boatyard, 86 Main Street, map 17 lot one, preliminary project discussion.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
See you as well.
My name's John Paul Thomas. I'm well, thanks. John Paul Thomas, I represent Shaw's Boatyard. Both principals are here. I think.
He's, well, he's, he's speaking, so if you're, if you're going to speak.
And I believe our engineer, Dave, is on the Zoom. I just wanted to introduce everybody. I know it's an informal meeting. I certainly don't want to cut off Mr. Lund. This is a proposed aerial photo of what the project is going to look like. I just wanted to give the board kind of a general idea of the project. With us today is Brendan Lund and Bob Munjin, two of the principal owners, the, the two principal owners, our general contractor, Corey, and Mr. David on the Zoom. So what I believe my clients are proposing is a building, which we've also, we have here today is a proposed engineered plan of what the building is going to look like. Certainly will provide it to the board. I know that both Bob and Brendan knew to this, knew to the Dighton community. I know that Mr. Munjin has a significant amount of experience with development. Mr. Lund is a marine contractor with significant experience in the marina business. I know that they want to be productive members of the Dighton community. They certainly want to prove a very significant purchase. Is there anything I'm missing? And they're here to answer any questions for you.
All right. So the structure you're referring to is the proposed storage garage?
Correct.
Okay. And that's the, okay. Go ahead.
So if you're looking at the first plan that I gave you, it's the orange color proposed storage garage, more on the inland part of the property.
Okay. Okay. And as the name states, this is going to be used for storage?
Dry storage, correct.
Dry storage.
Yeah.
So you mean any facilities within the storage facility?
Uh, no, I don't believe that there's going to be any facilities, but certainly Dave, our engineer could answer that question. It's probably a more of a, is that the question you asked? Is there going to be facilities inside of it?
Right. Is it, is it going to have plumbing, electrical?
Uh, that I'm, I don't believe so.
We're at the point, we're trying to work out those details and just trying to get an idea of what you're intending here.
Yeah. So if I understand the project correctly, Mr. Lund is here to answer that, but I believe it's going to be for dry storage.
Yeah, it's, it's as simple as you say, moving.
Is that your name and address?
Brendan Lund, owner at Shaw's Boatyard. Basically moving boats from outside to in. So electricity, outlets, lights, that's it. And, you know, be a heated space. So. Really, I think the goal tonight is to help introduce you to the project and really get your feedback. You know, what questions do you guys have for us? We submitted a building permit application. I think Dave had some questions about order of operations. Every town's a little different. In terms of CONCOM, building permit, et cetera, and how you want to go about that. So.
Have you gone to CONCOM?
No, sir. First, first step was we submitted the building permit application. I think Dave just got, Dave was, excuse me, Dave, Dave was away last week. But Lisa?
Lisa.
Lisa's already reached out to.
Lisa Caladoni, yeah.
Connect with Dave and then this. So that's really where we're at.
Okay.
And that's why this is informal introductory versus, you know, a full-blown submission for you.
Right. So it looks, it looks like you have communication here from, from Mr. Aggyar, the building commissioner. And he said he has your receipt of your building permit and looks like he is saying to get in touch with the conservation agent, which is Lisa, for any jurisdictional review. And for us, is it, is there a site plan that's required for this?
There'd be a site plan.
There'd be a site plan, right? So that, that is, so the order of operations is really your, we're kind of, it's, these things are happening in parallel, but site plan is what you'd have to submit to this board. And you've already done some of the work here already. So a lot of, a lot of what is required for the site plan and, you know, that's laid out in the general laws for the, for what's required for that application process. But Mrs. Easterday can provide you more details if needed. Let's see. I didn't see the attachments here, Karen. Is there anything we need to give them tonight, or?
For an apple application?
Yeah, no, they've, they've got. Yeah, that's, that's, that's what we have here. Right.
Yep.
This is the drawing, but there's a site plan application and.
Site plan review, correct?
Site plan review for the process.
I believe, right?
Yeah, you, it's right on our website. Yeah. So you can, you can submit that application that way and, and then you'd have to go through the.
But we can't really move forward until we get through CONCOM?
Well, there's, there's the, yeah, CONCOM and the site plan are, are in parallel, I guess. Yeah, so I don't. Yes, sir. Please go ahead. Please state your name and address.
I just didn't want to, everybody finish the conversation without being able to say a few words anyway.
Sir, please, sir, please state your name and address.
Yes, sir. My name is David DeViglin. I am a registered professional engineer in Conwell, Mass. I'm also a principal at Schneider, DeViglin, and Leoni. We are located in Madapoyset, Mass, 81 County Road.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. So a little bit of my background, I have 30 years' experience working along the coastline from Westport, throughout the best of behavior, Madapoyset, Marion, over Wayham. I must admit, I've never done any work in Dighton. That's a bit far for our operation, but I was very excited to join the new ownership group in trying to do permit, permits for improvements at their facility that they most recently purchased. Just a very quick overview of the color-coded plan provided, a presentation plan only, just so you can see, you know, generally speaking, when you compare it to the Google aerial photo, it's, it's the proposed less than 7,500 square foot building, primarily in a spot where boats are currently stored. Yeah, concept's pretty simple. Take the boats from outside and put them inside. More boat owners want to see that, and this is something they want to do. So I'm going to keep it brief. I know that, I do applaud your website. You post everything, which I don't see a lot of, a lot of times we work in anyway. So I know there's a wealth of information there for to guide me along the way. So the, the main question I only have for the board is any direction I may get because we work in many ten, well different towns, and they all operate differently. I heard filing concurrently with the site plan review planning board in the conservation commission. So that was one of my main questions. You know, some boards sometimes want us to go through conservation before we approach planning board. Some plans, you know, sometimes want vice versa. And then there's the stormwater aspect of it. Some towns have a separate stormwater board that we have to apply for stormwater permit for. Other towns, as far as peer review, the planning board handles it. Some towns, it's a different agency. So I'm, I'm just humbly asking for any direction that you may give me so that we, we move in the right direction without any, you know, errors here.
All right. So sir, you're, you're in luck. We just recently streamlined our process. So to take a lot of the burden away from the applicants, it's, it's a one-stop shop. And the one-stop shop is Mrs. Easterday. And she can handle your application. And then in, in, in parallel, Lisa Caladoni also gets involved with her application process, and then it goes downstream from there. And we do use an outside engineering firm for reviewing the application for applicability and for accuracy. So that all happens prior to coming, circling back to this board. So you don't have to keep coming back here over and over and over again. So this is preliminary. So this is, this is kind of unusual, which is good. Gives, gives us a heads up. We know what's coming down the road. So we're not surprised in seeing it for the first time. But normally, it's, you're, you're applying once and you're circling around and seeing this once. So what, once that gets into Carrie, she can submit it to our engineer for an estimate for what it will cost to review the package. You'll get the estimate, make payment. That'll happen. And then we'll get their inputs and we'll meet with you again. And then Lisa shortly after, and her, and her committee, and so we can move you along. And once that's all done, then Mr. Aggyar is on the other end with your building permit. And I missed anything today?
Don't think you missed anything.
Excellent. It happens. Stormwater is also.
Yeah, not an issue.
Yeah, exactly. So.
Why do we not introduce? Stormwater is advisory to these boards. So there's no separate.
There's no separate hearing. Yeah. Yeah. So it should be pretty streamlined. And we do, we should have a flow chart somewhere, hopefully on the website?
You should.
I spent a lot of time.
I'll update that tomorrow.
I spent a lot of time with that poor flow chart. So we'll make sure we get our updated process flow chart on the website, but it's effectively what I just described now. Because what was happening is you guys were coming in, we're looking at it, great. Okay, apply. And then you'd have to come in again. We'd have to vote on the engineering estimate. And then you'd leave. They'd go, they'd do their thing. We'd get their feedback. You'd come in again. It was like three meetings. We was dragging out, like, we need to stop this. So hopefully we'll be able to show that we're a little more streamlined and you guys will be the beneficiaries of that. So I don't, I don't have any specific questions of this project. This looks very straightforward to me.
I have one question. The height of the building, is it blocking anybody's view or anything like that? I don't.
No, sir. Blocking the trees from seeing the river.
Okay.
Oh, because, oh, right here. It's all vegetation right there, right?
The first things we did when we took over is kind of introduce ourselves to the neighbors. And we want to be there for a while. So we want to get working relationship, you know?
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. A lot of times people don't realize that. When the building goes up, we get the other end of that.
I'm glad you guys are doing this. This looks like a really good upgrade for the site. And I'm sure, like, like you mentioned, that the people using this are going to appreciate having a dry storage facility. So this will be a.
I just have one question. It's more for Mr. Aggyar, and he didn't mention it in here. And so, because it gets very messy on the ground. But so my understanding is the facilities that you have right now are on, or at least partly on, an open space zone, and they're pre-existing non-conforming buildings, so they're fine. And then right behind it is a business zone. And I think just to the north of it is an industrial zone. And it's hard to tell on the ground, like, where the delimiters are, which is why we named Mr. Aggyar. But so where this building is going is going to be kind of important for him to tell us you are or are not in the right zone to be putting this building up. And maybe even if it's in the open space zone, I don't know if we have leeway about, because what's there now, my understanding is pre-existing non-conforming. I don't know if you can add to that or not. And that's all a question for Mr. Aggyar as the building commissioner. So.
It is, but I would like to add that open space rack is, marinas are. It is, but I would like to add that open space rec is, marinas are known as open space recreational.
I had this conversation with Jim once before.
Marinas?
Yeah, I had this, prior to your ownership, I had this conversation with Jim, and that was not the case, yeah.
Oh, did you? Ah.
It's a business.
It's a business, but it's a marina, right?
Yeah, but it's not, open space is not the proper zoning for it.
Ah, okay.
And what's there is pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay.
Or at least some of it sits on that, so.
So...
I just need, I just want, you know, Jim's feedback to say that this is properly zoned for the purpose or if not, you know, the options and so forth.
Alright. I'll put that out, out there too.
Any other questions for us?
Oh, I was going to ask. Uh, Dave, do you have any other questions?
No, sir, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Well, thank, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Larry Stridesburg here for the next one.
Yeah, I'm...
Oh, here she is, hello. Uh, so next item on the agenda is Blue Wave Energy, nine zero-three Tremont Street, map eight, lot twenty-seven. And zero in six twenty-four Middle Street on map eight, lot thirty-one, and eighty. An as-built review and approval. So in our packets, we have, should have two things, right? We have... I like to come back. Okay, alright, Elmar, this is your stuff here. So we have the as-built drawings and do we also have, we don't have this separate letter?
Not there? It should be at the very end, I think. From the Weston Sampson?
Yeah, yeah.
Should be the very last page.
Yeah, I have the separate, so let's get the... We have the peer review letter. So we have, uh, also a letter from Weston and Sampson, uh, January thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, to the planning board. Uh, Weston and Sampson, please provide peer review of the as-built designs of nine zero-three Tremont Street and six twenty-four Middle. Uh, and the purpose was to confirm that the as-built for the nine oh-three, for the project, are substantially consistent with the site plan that was approved by the planning board. Uh, we have received the following materials, and that's the drawing you have before you. And they conducted a review of the as-bills and found no significant deviations from the planning board's approved plan, and therefore recommend closeout of the planning board permit. Everything is in order, uh, based on, uh, the drawings here and our peer review. And, um, I don't know if anybody on the board here has any concerns or questions for the, uh, the applicant? None here. Dan, do you have any questions for us?
Nope, I'm all set, if you are.
Okay, excellent. Quick and easy. Alright, so, uh, um, no questions, uh, like to entertain a, a motion to approve the, uh, or actually to close out, right?
Uh, no, just approving the as-built, Jim is the one that closes, so.
Approve the as-built, got it, thank you. Uh, to approve the, uh, as-built, uh, drawings provided by Blue Wave Energy, uh, at nine oh-three Tremont and six twenty-four Middle.
I'll make that motion in a sec.
She made, seconded. Uh, need discussion before we take it to a vote. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye, that's four ayes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there something we need? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I just want to ask, is there any, um, anything else we need to do to close it out? Or does this, uh, effectively close out the, the special permit?
You, you should report back to Jim Aggyar, the building commissioner, so he'll be notified that the board approved the as-built. And then, I'm not sure what the procedure is on his side, but he can advise you on that.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Take care.
Alrighty, uh, next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from January fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five. Want to make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any correspondence, Mrs. Easterday?
No.
None. Any public input? Hearing none? Somebody make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Good night, Cable. Good night.